We'll now call the City Council Regular Meeting to order for January 11th at 6:00 P.M. Please rise to the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day. For what we think you put protection upon us, Father. Father, we just ask that you give us the wisdom, Solomon, in thy word. Father, we pray for our country tonight, Father. We just ask that you bring unity to this place, Lord. You will not have strife or the only crying comment. I just ask that you bring us all together in this time, Lord, that we can move forward across those way, Father. Father, we call you in this country, Lord. We just ask that you build this country, fill every part of this country, Father, with your strength.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we lose our clerk?
Temporarily.
Chief Founder. We'll get a roll call when we can.
Councilmember Gray here. Councilmember Sullivan present. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum. I apologize.
Thank you, no problem. First up, item number four, we have the second reading of ordinance 10-2020, big meeting on subdivision flats.
Jennifer Cotto Salisbury from CF Mark, PC is on Zoom.
We're going to read the title. It's ordinance to City of Bay Harbor, Park 4, big getting closer to the boundaries of subdivision flats, 1 to 23 inclusive, Little Red Water shores according to platero that according to platero 7, page 17 of court records in Highlands County, Florida, and closed part 5 for ORB 978, page 641 of court records in Highlands County, Florida, aligning upon Park, Highlands County, Florida, and returning the subject property to acreage and approving that certain platent titles Red Water industrial sites being a replatable Little Red Water shores would be in section 12, downstairs, 34 south, range 28 east, Highlands County, Florida, or filing an acceptance and reports for this chapter. Chapter 177, Florida statutes and all applicable visions of city of Bay Harbor, Park Lane, Elkhorn Cove, and establishing effective.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Public hearing for ordinance 10-2020 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak can now do so.
Well, good evening. This is Jennifer Cotto Salisbury with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Just as the city attorney had read the short title, this would be allowing for approval of the plat for four lots on Lake Little Red Water, and I'm available for any questions.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Bring back the council. Does the council have any questions for Jennifer?
I have one question, Jennifer, if I may. Page three or four, it says their water and sewer connections will be addressed at time of construction. Do you have any update about that situation?
The applicant has stated at the time when the lots do come in, there will be a connection to utilities. We are working with the city's public works on where those lines are, but we understand from past discussions that there will be utilities available.
Do you know if there's a start date yet, or just preliminary?
I'm sorry, could you apologize what? Can you repeat that?
Is there a start date for that building, or is this just preliminary?
This is a preliminary plat. I don't know that there's a start date yet.
Thank you.
I do have one question for you, and this is related, but not perhaps so much. Are you familiar at all with whether or not the Parkway will have access to Claridge Road in the future versus the current access to this location, which is the back road of, what, 17? Do you know if there's any future land changes to, anyway, the Parkway access?
I am not aware. Actually, Jeff on our staff, I'm sure he is, and I apologize, he's not here tonight.
Reason why I ask is because if this gets developed, then our fire department's going to have to go the long way to get there as well as law enforcement.
It's already been incorporated in the city.
Yeah, but there's no access on the east side of this development, right? So I just didn't know. I thought the park was going to have.
If there is a connection to the Parkway, it's not part of the Parkway project. So it would have to be an additional project. That would be a question that the county might want to consider.
It would be helpful, I think.
But having four lots is far better than what was.
True.
So less likely that it, four houses would be constructed, or 50 something, as it was before. So from the city side, is there, is this property connected with the city utilities at this point, or no?
I believe so. I believe so, but we're going to need to evaluate and see exactly where they want their connections, what we can provide up in that area.
But you don't know if it's already connected?
You know, I haven't looked specifically, I don't, but if it's in the city service area, then we'll be able to provide service.
Okay.
I think it's across the street and the road.
Yeah, that's right. Anyhow, any other questions for Jennifer? Seeing none, we'll now call a roll.
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
We made a motion, approve item under V4, ordinance number 10-2020.
We have a motion and a second. Now we can call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion for passion, Annas?
Item number five, the approval of quarterly payments for plastic palladiums.
And that's actually supposed to be monthly payments from February to May, sorry.
Okay. Monthly payments for plastic palladiums. Is anyone from Plastic here to speak?
No, we did this last year for them. I think the last two years was where it was spoke, so they just want to do the same thing.
Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Anyone have a motion?
I made a motion, we approve item D5. Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion for passion, Annas?
Item number six, resolution 2020-01, simply renewing the state of emergency. Do we have any future plan, or what is the deal, when this might end?
I honestly don't know. Like I said, I read somewhere where you had to have it for grants and that, but I have nothing further out. I'm curious if it's not.
No, it's not. I think at some point, you know, we need to talk about whether we can continue this or stop it. So I don't have a good chance of talking about that.
Okay.
I agree. I hate to be on the state of emergency all the time.
All right, item number seven, we have the minutes from December 14th, 2020, regular council meeting. There's no changes, we'll ask for motion.
I make the motion, we approve the minutes of December 14th, 2020.
We have a motion and a second. Now call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion for passion, Annas?
Item number eight, change order number two for metro equipment, and this is US 27 projects. We have Rick in Carl's name down here. Who would like to take it? Step right up, Carl.
This is change order number two, which we would be proposing change to the contract you have with the contractor with this metro equipment. This is the last change order that we expect to see. It is a change order that made some modifications that needed at the end, and they have included that. I remember discussing with council some months back, and there was a question of how much did I expect the change order to be? And I estimated that it might be in the neighborhood of $20,000. As it turns out, the change order is not $20,000. It's over $17,000. But it's a change order that we reviewed and I recommend approval. I think that Rick Reed has looked at it and approved it, and if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. So it is, I believe we should, we got a payment to make to finalize this project out. Project's complete, the water for the new core is working fine. The lift station and sewer system modifications are working fine. This is just closing out this contract.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Carl?
I do. What exactly, I mean, I know that the work activities are listed in here, but why was this outside the bounds of your original contract? What was the extra work that needed to get done that was not included in the original spends?
Well, one of the design drawings that Paulson prepared showed that when we crossed Sun Pure Road, then we would have to open cut the road, which is cheaper than jack and board or directional wiring, and that was what the contractor did. But then when we got ready to grease surface that, put the asphalt down, because the cuts were close, sore closed, the county wanted the road to be resurfaced the whole way, rather than resurface the two cuts. The plans called for two cuts, but the county wanted to resurface the whole area, which makes sense. If you go out there, it makes sense. So that cost some more, and there was a modification through the electrical system that was needed, and it's where the cables come out of the lift station into the bottom of the control cabinets. Very complicated and expensive control cabinets. And Rick Reed suggested, and I suggested, that there should be another box below the control part, which seals off any gases that might come out of the lift station, keeps it from getting into the cabinet. And this included that additional cabinet and the electrical improvements for that. Those are the two major changes. These were changes that we discovered that were needed as it was being built, and we recommended that these be made. When they first submitted the proposed change order, it came in at over $22,000, and we argued and differed with them, and we got it now to under $17,915 and 97 cents. Really, I recommend you approve this, it's reasonable.
Any other questions?
I have one question, if I may. All the invoices that are in our packet are all dated back in April and May. Is that part of the change order?
Those are documentation as to the reason for this change order. They are all included in this. They're not in addition to it.
But they've already completed all the work, is that correct?
Sir?
Is all the work being completed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This isn't grant funded, this is not one of the grants? This is not a pocket for the city?
The city got two grants for this project, and in roundabout numbers, the two grants totaled like $1.6 million. The contract was, this was just over $2 million. So you have some city money in this project, around about $400,000. Like city money out of the city's budget, but the majority of the project was paid for by grants.
But there's still about a half a million out of the city?
About $400,000.
$417,000.
Yeah.
So does this require a budget adjustment? Mark?
For the 17, didn't you talk to Danielle on it? I'd ask Rick to talk Danielle on the 17, nine, and Danielle was out sick last week, and she's not here tonight because she's still feeling under the weather.
Can you speak up? We need to know if Danielle's.
No, I'm sorry. I'd ask Rick last week to talk Danielle about this, but he didn't get a chance. Danielle was out sick a couple days, and she isn't here tonight because I heard her home, but she's not, still not feeling her weather. So Rick was going to talk to Danielle on that.
Okay. We do have money in the water lot extension, so we could use that, help partially fund it.
Yeah, because you'll still have to move that money in, so it is a budget adjustment.
We can move it.
I mean, that's fine. I'm just saying we have to approve it, but they're not going to, I guess we can pay them the need adjustment afterwards, I guess.
This is not an application, and that will come next. That will be, and it will be processed, so it will probably be on your consent agenda, but it will be one of your bills that you'll see in the future.
Okay.
Any other questions for Carl? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I have a motion, we approve item number V8 for change order number two for rest of different services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion for passion, Annas?
And for the record, that was Carl Cool with Cool and Gob Engineering. Item number nine, community planning grant, number P0393.
Rick, this is the grant that Tim Lee Horn applied for and got for us, and it explores and evaluates the possible change that may be needed to our process at the wastewater treatment plant and the solids handling due to the industrial wastewater that we're taking from the core. Questions?
And it's 100% funded?
Yes. What they have done is filled out the grant and put the amount that would be needed to fund it, which is 38,500, and that's what we got.
Any other questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
To make a motion, we approve item D9, engineering services for the community planning grant number P0393.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Now call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion for passion, Annas?
Thank you. Item number 10, first reading ordinance 01-2021.
It's an ordinance to City of Bay Harbor, Park 4, providing for the cycles as to the council intent, amending the city code, article 2, division 3, adding sections 98-2 and 98-3, providing for general requirements and adding separate trust accounts for collecting capacity fees and proper accounting for uses thereof, renumbering and amending other sections under section 3, providing for manner of calculation of TAP and near fees, calculation of capacity fees, and to oppose new or facility capacity contact fees based on excluded rural order association capacity fee study report, removing references to refunds of capacity fees, removing references to capacity fee payment plans, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, modification, refill of conflicting codes, ordinances, and resolution 700, in an effective date.
Do we have any motion?
I move to approve of first reading ordinance 01-2021 as a ten time entitled D10.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I have a few questions on it. It sounds to me like a question that probably has to be answered by the company that gave the rate study. So this is the first reading. We'll have until our next meeting to get those questions answered. Probably be better just to give them a call and ask them directly.
Okay, that's fine. It tells what item you're looking at, Mayor?
Looking at the ERC values. One page, they're valued at 250 gallons per day, which is for the wastewater, for the water. On the wastewater, they're valued at 159 gallons, which is marked down from 300 gallons. So there's an engineering factor in there. Basically, wanting to ask them how they arrived at that number and how did they justify that.
Yeah, because they base that on empirical data. The 300 gallons per day for ERC is a number that's used widely, but it needs to be adjusted to show the exact numbers, how to calculate. I can get you an explanation in writing if you'd like.
Please do. There's another question I had. Now, we struck through the majority of the existing business types where you have a set ERC value assigned to that business type. So how will they be calculated if we don't have that scale?
Reference analysis of form administrative code, which is where those numbers came from. And that same list is there in the form administrative code section, and who wants to calculate can go to that section to get it. The problem with the state of the market, and there are changes, and sometimes they change the health or the changes as code figures, they're not so high.
Do you know if they've changed from what we had in our table, the current date?
Yeah, there's a couple of changes, that's why.
Were they significant changes, or?
They pretty significant, yeah.
I would like to get a copy of that table, possibly.
Sure.
And be included in our packet for next meeting.
Sure.
Can I just have one question for Jerry? I know that on page four, where it talks about the surcharge for the out of city or the outbound duty fee, is 25% a base set amount, or is that arbitrary? I mean, I know we have 25% right now. Change 412, section 75, I'm sorry, it's now 73, 98-7. And that hasn't changed? I mean, that's the current rate, 25%. It's not struck through or anything?
Yeah, no, that's, that's what was there before. I didn't change that.
I think that if we're going to be looking for more revenue, that that should be a area that we consider.
Well, you can't go any higher than 25%.
Oh, that was my question.
I'm sorry.
That's it.
Yeah, all right, so.
There you go.
Chapter 18, the four statutes as provisioned there, prior to chapter 180, cities were, or counties, were basically, cities were basically charging outside people, you know, exorbitant rates, like 80%, 90%, 100%. They said you can do 25% automatically, okay? It doesn't require any study. But if you go over 25%, you have to have a rate study done, just like we just had with these people, to show the difference, why you're going to charge at that point that you did over 25% overly amount. And I don't think you could do it, so 25% would go through there.
Under what, under what circumstances would you approve it?
Possibly in your, your usage rates, because you get somebody way outside the city that had their sewage accepted, the cost of treating that would be more because there would be problems in your lift stations and part of the plant, the specificity, it would cost more money to irrigate at your plant and be able to where it used to be. But capacity fees is a one-time charge based on how many gallons are you sending a day, and loading to some extent, but really the loading is not figured in unless it's over the amount that we have on normal DOD, like a 250 or TSS. That's why we had a surge charge for industrial clients.
So section on item D9, which was a community planning grant, that right there wouldn't elicit any kind of validation for an increase in capacity fees? I mean, he was talking about how, you know, if the capacity might change based off of the effluent and stuff in that effluent from, you know, outside of the boundaries of the city, particularly where we own particular business. So does, does that going to affect anything with the tons there, have a, or a yield aid?
I wouldn't be surprised if the 25% didn't cover it, but, you know, Rick, I'm often wondering with that project, do you think there's some significant DOD or TSS loading or something else that we would have to treat more to cause it, cause it to have more capacity at our plant?
Not unless it was an industrial user, and we got the industrial user.
Right.
Ordinance coming up next. And we do have the ability to calculate and differentiate between residential wastewater and industrial wastewater, if we need it as necessary, 70% of the big salary.
I hope that in the industrial wastewater, where we get that surcharge for, you know, organic, more organic matter than somebody else might send, or residential would send. You know, for somebody that's just might have something, you know, commercial, not industrial, it's unlikely to come to 25%. Even if 25% was justified.
Okay.
Like a restaurant, it's something like that.
Any other questions? Like I say, we have a motion and a second. This is the first reading. There's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion for passion, Annas?
Item number D11, discussion of website quote. Mr. Shu?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I started looking at, early summer, we were having the discussion about how our website was not ADA, and we needed to look into getting the correct coding, contacted Revise, who currently hosts our website, and they advised me that the HTML coding, basically the language that's in our website, does not allow for ADA compliance, and they said, well, for very healthy cost, we could update and get that up to, you know, stuff right now. And as it was, we were approaching our last year of the contract. At that time, I talked to Mark about we need to search around and find a better provider, went and contacted six different companies, attended their demos, looked at their numerous sites that they had done, and the pros and cons of going with a standard site versus one that's a little nicer than others. The biggest thing that I wanted to push with all these companies was the fact that having a website, which our current one isn't, is more mobile friendly for tablets and, you know, cell phones and everything like that, versus laptops and computers, that should be their primary function. Narrowed it down to three companies after the other three were just not even in the ballpark of trying to give the correct type of service. Sat down with Mark, kind of went over the stuff, and then talked more with the support people, what they couldn't, couldn't do to help us out. Pretty much all the companies that were down in the final three would take an average of four to six months to convert our current data, to bring it over, to build a new website offline for us to look at, to eventually move over. Based on the fact that we're in January now, by the time that feasibly they could be finished will be in July, sometime late July, which would only mean our current contract ends November 6th of this year. So, I mean, we have to do something fairly soon, or else the losing company can just shut off the data, and then the gaining, whatever we set up with, is we're out four to six months without anything on the internet. You know, there are other bells and whistles with all these websites that they have, and they can do and everything, but at this point, my thought was, well, let's just get to a better web server, web host, and talk about fiscal, time again, adding on a couple other add-ons to this that would help the city in doing our business. So my recommend is going with this MUNICode, after reviewing all their websites and discussing with numerous people in their group, that they seem like they're, they're the best for our money. Plus, a lot of the companies wanted to either stretch it way out, past five years, and technology, basically after three, is useless. So anything, I thought that we, if we go out that far, we're really losing what we can in trying to have the latest coding so that we can stay up to date and work best for the city, is what I was trying to do.
Okay. Your recommendation is for MUNICode, and I see multiple years here. Now, are we signing up for a four-year agreement if we go with MUNICode?
With MUNICode, yes, sir. It would be a four-year agreement.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions today?
Yeah, did they accept the changes I made?
Yes, sir. Yep, 100%.
Anyone else?
Is it a private company, or is it a quasi-governmental?
No, it's a, it's a private company. Yep.
But just that, we looked at many of the municipalities that use it, and it was pretty nice, what we saw, but there are several.
I'm assuming it's a very commonly used service, MUNICode is?
Yes.
Something to hear about quite a bit, so.
Yeah, and they have a lot of diversity. And they do have a lot of diversity and different things that, you know, that they keep track of. So a lot of the, between the web hosting, and they have modules that will allow you to do agendas and articles and everything, they all tie into each other so that when you say you want to go look for something, you go to the agenda, it goes to the other one and searches all over, and connects videos to audio, and texts and everything else. So that really is quite the package that they have, depending on what you want to buy.
Okay. Well, there's no further questions?
I have a couple questions. Go ahead. The first thing I noticed is that this is going to be very complicated, so one of my questions is, besides having you work with them side by side, do we have plans for somebody besides having you work with them side by side, do we have plans for somebody else to be there so that we always have a backup when you're not available and so on and so forth? Because there's, there's going to be a lot of changes done here, first of all, even our website now, there, there's multiple changes and upgrades that need to be done because there's information on there that is not correct, you know, names and titles and so on and so forth. But there's going to be a lot of work on our side to get it up to date for them to transfer over. But, and I know this, they talked about training all the way up to the finish and then there's additional costs for training outside, I think it's like fifteen hundred dollars a day minimum. So are we planning on having somebody else trained within the city that's going to be a long-term help yourself?
That, that's the hope and, and the contact Greg has said, you know, if we could have three or four people on the team, different people that have, and, and they're not looking for people with just super IT backgrounds, just people that use the website to say, this, this makes it better for me and, and get input from all sorts of different aspects of the users. So that would be my hope and as of right now, we don't have anybody else in there that would be tech savvy to do that. I know that Mark is, and we're still looking for in, in the house IT person that eventually they would do that too, but to have other people that are involved to do this. The difference too with this website is, right now, it's quite tedious to put stuff on our current website. Here's five, six, seven clicks just to put something in there. With a new one, it's a, it's a picture, it's a movie, it's a text, it's an upload, it's done. That's it. Which, which again is the difference between running the sixty-seven Volkswagen and having a twenty-twenty, you know, Ferrari. It, it is just that much faster to do things.
So we're going to be upgrading the information as they do their process?
Right, well, and, and again, to start out with, they will give us basically kind of a sketch of, here's our idea, what do you think? And this is where we as the city and whoever else wants to be part of it say, could we do this, this and this? And so they design this offline, then will give us a first view of, here's what we've done, how do you like this or what do you want us to move around? Then we can say move this, this and this, which is why it takes the four to six months, because they're going to build it, show it to us, we're going to say change it, they're going to build it, redo it, come back to us and say, no, change it this way, change it this way. Everything that they do is based on what input we give them. And so the more people we can have involved in this, the better.
Well, I guess my other question is then, are we going to have somebody work on this in advance to give the property information so that they can make the upgrades and changes? Because like I said, it seems like there's a lot of preparatory work for us just to do to get the right names, the titles and so on and so forth on there. There's some boards where they have the wrong names of people on there, there's some boards where there's no names on there, there's different types of things, so there's a lot of prep work that we need to do before they get started. Do we have a plan for that?
At the current time, no. And, and I, I say that with reservation that what they're going to do is take our current website, and again, this is where offline, we can take and say, okay, you've got this particular pulled-on item, talking about this board or this committee, whatever, these are the names that need to be in there. And this is, this is part of the building scheme for us to get back to them, so it's not automatic or not something where they go, you have a week to get this back to us. We have the time between now and November, you know, to make sure everything is the way we want it before they turn it online and we turn off the other one, so.
I think that means that we probably need to have somebody besides you.
Right.
Definitely inclusive, right there, side by side the whole time.
Right.
That's what I would like to see.
Okay, Jim, let me discuss the question, I'll make a statement. My thought on that is that, like, if I review the website and I notice something was wrong on it, I would, I would submit to either the city manager, I would probably send it to the city manager and say, this is wrong, this is what needs to be updated.
Right.
And then my understanding is that this is when, I think what you were saying, someone else besides, um, um.
David.
David, there you go, can get that information and, and filter it onto the gentleman that's going to do the updates for us, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, because somebody needs to look over the whole information, especially when it comes to names and dates and stuff like this.
Yeah, I think the point, the, the point is to have a website that's more easily available. So somebody at the city is going to have to make all those changes. We're not going to have to sit there and go through and make every single change on demand and then give it to them and put it on, because guess what? In a month, something else is going to have to change.
Exactly.
So I wouldn't critique so hard on trying to get everything perfect before we give it to them. We're more or less getting a more modular basis that's easily adjustable.
Right.
I think the main thing is getting the IT person. So we have, like you said, what was it, four, four to five months it takes?
Well, they said four, allow four to six months for the transition from the old before the new one would be built.
Right. So realistically, we really need an IT person by the end of the month, pretty much.
No, neither.
Yeah, and nobody at middle school has accepted the application.
Looking for middle school?
They're the best techies out there.
I'll tell you, my daughter had a friend in the third grade that cut off the props from the teacher and whole class did not conduct itself because he controlled the electronics in there from his laptop and he was what, twelve? I have a question regarding email access by council, so if there's an issue, because it happens, I don't know about you guys, but it happens with me, probably every three months or so after reading my password, call Mark or call Kim, who calls Kyle, who calls them, who calls us, and then, you know, then we get it. But is there going to be that same level of babysitting of the council under emails? I mean, are we going to have a better, better, or is it going to have, is, is it going to be the same format?
I mean, we'll still have the same address and as far as the email server, that's no way connected to this at all. However, this particular company offers secure mailboxes where you can set up the mailbox for everybody and then if things are deposited, like the post office, you go in, you open up, you have your ID and your password, you can go in and get your stuff and download it there instead of going through email so things can be distributed to people securely that way.
So how far back, just question here, on occasion, I'll try to log in and I'll get in and then my emails, when we go as far back as three months, and then the next day or the next week after I resolve my access to the computer, I can go back one year. I use all of those old emails as part of my information base. Are we going to be able to carry all of our previous emails into this new server or are we going to start a fresh day?
Well, again, this, this is the website, this isn't the mail server.
Okay, but I mean, okay, but in regards to the email then, if it's not going to be through this site, we're going to have to log in somewhere else for that, is that where you're going to send your packets and stuff to us as well? So we're going to have two separate addresses to go to?
No, you'll not, the, the address, okay, the addresses will still be same. The website, the hosting and the website and all this stuff is one thing. The city servers with all of our data and all our emails are completely different, two different entities. And now, what I'm talking about is that on the city website, we will have a thing that says staff login that would include the city council, where you would be given an ID and a generic password to start up and then you would change your password, which again, as administrator, myself and whoever others are administrators, if you lost your password, we could reset it, but we could put the council, the packets or whatever you want in those mailboxes if you're having issues with email and don't want these in your email. And then this way, all the packets are always in your mailbox on the website. So you can always retain that there without filling up your mailbox space for whatever reason, however many hundreds of makes they are. But, but again, they're two separate, you know, computer systems, so. And, and really, it, it's up to you, we can do both of them until somebody says, yeah, stop sending it to my email, I'm just going to go get it in my mailbox that way. And so even though they're a mailbox and a server, they are still two separate entities.
Mark, did you have something to go with that?
Just wanted to add to what David said about Jim's question. My thought is when we get a team, as he said, it doesn't need to be an IT team, it's how we want it set up and I didn't have much time to do it, but I went in a few of the, I've got, in fact, they're listed in your packet, I think, a bunch of agencies in Florida that have this. And theirs are all similar, but they're all set a little different, so that's our team. And I think when they set it up, that's when we look, okay, you're setting up who your, your boards are and councils, that's when someone on team, Tim, who's going to know who's on these, we're going to make sure it's right. And as, as far as I'm concerned, someone on council if you want can be on the team that, you know, likes to, with, the whole, I'm not a big website person, but when you go to look for something on certain websites, it's easy, it's right there, bam, other ones, you got to search here, go there, and I, I, I'm after asking him, where is that? And in our current one, we can only put a, a few important things, like three things that is on that line there. So, again, when I went in quick, looked at some of these MUNI code ones, they had a set of different ones where, it's Cape Coral, wherever, probably best of the best down there, but it was right there in front of you, basically the things that people be looking for, you know, once the, the COVID vaccine being put out or whatever. So that's what the team is helping build, but when we build, we're going to make sure that the right information is on there. And again, someone on council wants to be on the team, David's putting together.
Yeah. We have the websites, like you say, in our package here, so I mean, everybody should take a second to go over those websites and think about what you like and don't like, you know, fire off an email to the city staff.
I'm okay with whatever they choose, I mean, it's as long as it's functional and correct, is all that matters.
And the, and the correct thing comes in when we get, when we get somebody for IT, that'd be part of their job too. Because right now, if I need something on there, I'm going with David, he's the best right now, putting something up. Danielle's good, but Danielle's, well, David did too, but Danielle's very good, and so he gets stuff up there pretty quick and he makes a fancy one somehow with Halloween, but.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve item D eleven to award the website posting to MUNI code. Second.
We have a motion in second, any further questions?
One last question, was this budgeted?
I did speak to Danielle, the new, but no, I, I spoke to Danielle and asked her, based on the communication, website development, all that, and the funding, and she gave me the sheet. Actually, Dan had given me the sheet since we started this way when Dan was here. And there is more than enough money in all the accounts for all the separate departments to cover for this, because.
But it wasn't a line item, budgeted item?
No, no.
That was my question.
It was for our current website, but that was already paid, so there was not a line item.
We're moving money around to pay for this.
What's that?
We're moving money around to pay for this.
Yes, for this first year, forty-eight thousand something, then obviously it'd be budgeted, forty-eight hundred. I was just seeing everybody's way to get a little.
So that, I mean, I know it's not a lot at the onset, but over time it does add up, right? So because it wasn't budgeted and you're taking out all of these other line items, are those line items going to be eliminated in the next budget so that we only have one line item for this particular thing? Or are you still going to have all these other expense accounts?
No, it should be.
Yeah.
One line item for it.
Right, so all the ones that you're taking the money out are overfunded?
Well, they're funded based on the briefing that Dan and Danielle had given me recently, that they are funded for IT projects and that part of that is a website hosting, that kind of stuff. And so that is heavily funded right now and of recent, we seem to be using a lot of that. But with that, the amount that's coming out, when it's divided by ten different departments, you're, you're talking five hundred dollars for each of them.
So any, is any of this coming out of the payroll that would have been going towards the individual?
No.
For the time that that person has not been hired?
This is, this is all per what they had told me is coming out of the contracted services, which is directly related to website hosting and computer, the technology.
Okay, we had a cushion for most of the line item.
That's my friend Stanley, because he would contest that.
Yes, I, I do like the idea they did this option B on the four-year industry payment schedule, that's a, that's a nice thing to deal with.
Right.
I'm good with it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed three to one.
Thank you. Right up number B twelve, I believe there was a little bit of confusion as to whether or not we were supposed to have the forms completed and turned in tonight versus having more time to speak to the city manager. I don't believe all the council had that opportunity, so it would be my recommendation that we clear it off until next meeting.
Mark, do you, are you agreeing with them?
I'm going to agree more to this.
Anyone have any questions or?
Well, I, I had called Mark earlier, I have not had an opportunity to sit down with him. I did a quick review of the items that I have and I'm very biased because I only have my point of view and I don't have his input on some of the questions that I have. And because of that, I really wanted to agree with him, when I'm one, and just be able to go over some of these things so that he can enlighten me on some things and tell me I'm wrong on others and tell me I'm right on some of the others. So I am requesting that the council postpone this until we can reach a, it's up to you guys, you know, I don't know who's ready to go through it, but anyway, I'm not ready tonight, I'm, I'm just saying that, I will not be able to, um.
I don't have, I, I don't have a problem with it, wait, because I did meet with Mark personally and then I also spoke with him on the phone and I also have my evaluation ready, but I, I'm okay with, with the waiting so that everybody else can have an opportunity to meet with him.
Is that okay with Mark, because we keep our arrangements out and it's supposed to be six months out?
How long are we talking about?
Oh, just until the next meeting.
Okay.
Very good. Item number thirteen, reappoint housing authority commissioners Ronnie Jackson and Louis Muntz. Their applications are in here and we all know them, there's no objections, on everyone's motion?
I make the motion, we accept vote, Mr. Louis Muntz and Ronnie Jackson to the housing authority.
Sir.
We have a motion in second, there's no questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor, motion to pass, unanimous.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, public hearing, this will be a second reading for ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two.
Orders to amend the city code, section fifty-nine-one, the city code to ensure that the city adopts state codes and current, currently adopted versions, whereas that is specified in a year of adoptions, providing implements and sustainability, providing inclusion of code and expected.
Okay, this will be a public hearing, anyone from the audience wishing to speak to ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two can now do so. Don't all dump at once. Seeing those speakers, ordinance, public hearing for ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two is now closed. Anyone from the council asking questions can now do so. Seeing none, we'll call a roll. We need a motion, again, I'm jumping ahead.
I move that we approve item F fourteen, ordinance number, second reading for ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-two.
Second.
We have a motion in second, there's no questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to pass, unanimous.
Last but not least, we have the updates from the city manager.
Been asked a few questions from a couple of you also, the press and others about the wild building demo. Try to speak in your microphone, I'm sorry. Reference to wild building demo, I've been asking questions, when are they going to do that? We found out, you know, the end of last week, because they were off for the holidays, that it's going to be this month, they can't give the specific date, but it'll be this month. As far as the housing authority property transfer, it's finally done. And they had a closing on the eighteenth, but they also were off for the holidays, so we just heard from them last week that the paperwork, assigned paperwork for the city is on its way, but it, it has been recorded, it's ours, and today they were putting the new playground equipment on it and if they didn't finish today, they said they'd be finishing tomorrow.
Excellent. Just going back to the wild building issue for second. They did an email, I forwarded on to you from David Tong, our trial attorney at the, at the office. Apparently you can automate it, Jane?
End of one year.
Okay, thank you. They filed another complaint, tried to get their building back, the building that they've lost. And, you know, so we claimed obviously that that's not lawful and we already have rulings, we have a ruling from New York, a ruling here, and it's, it's not supposed to go forward. The judge is considering it right now, you know, let's, we, our motion to dismiss that stuff. Some, there are some, seem to be an. Some, there was some, seemed to be an intu it that I asked him, we get a favorable ruling or if you like, the truth. Fully expect to be a good ruling on it, but if we do, that we would go after attorneys on that matter. Because it's just, they just don't ever stop. And there's just, should be no basis for this, you know, additional claim. It's a, when a court has ruled, you can't go to a different court and say, we'd like a different ruling from you. So, that's where we're at. But can I guarantee one hundred percent that nothing will ever happen to it? But I just think it's doubtful if she would have, but I bring it up because we get rid of them, the building, they are coming, they are.
I have a question on that, not particularly the legal weeds part of it, but in regards to, once the building is torn down, let's just say the building prior had paid impact fees, all the fees essential to conducting business. And I think at one point, they had a salon in there, they had a restaurant in there, it's been all kinds of things, residential upstairs. If it gets ever built again, will they be subject to, would you impact these or would they rely on the ones that were there from before?
They would rely on the ones that were there before.
And that's a good marketing tool right there, right?
See, if you, you had, there's several cases in Florida on that issue, but if you have an existing building that's been used, you can't change the use or whatever. You can't, totally could have lost that now. Now, I assume that it wouldn't change something that you take down a building, because it's not really associated with buildings, but associated with the usage. And even though they never paid capacity fees, probably because this has been a long, long time going for capacity fees for the amendment, it's still, this is a grant on it, they're still having, you know, the benefit of it they had the usage before. But, you know, I'll look into that when the time comes and give you more firm answers. That's my comment.
Along that same line, are those impact fees owned in essence by that location or are they owned by the company that owns it?
Where are those buildings, those rights?
And what I mean by that is, let's say a company has that building and they have the one right next to it, in a separate scrap number. They, the one next to it is vacant, they have an existing building that's paid impact fees, they want to tear that building down and on a separate scrap number build another building exactly the same way, do those impact fees transfer?
Can't transfer the fees.
So, therefore, it goes by the scrap number?
It goes by, you know, scrap number, you know, and a breached building. You know, a lot of people would like to say, you know, well, I'm, I'm moving out of this building here and I don't plan on using it anymore. I'd like to transfer this to a new place on the other side of town. I can't do that. It's a transfer of capacity fees.
Anything else for the city manager?
Not a state.
Okay, there's nothing else? That includes our agenda. If there's anything else.
I would just like to request from our city manager if we could continue something we did in the past where we have an ongoing city manager's update and continue to have everything added so that we, everything we discussed today will be available to discuss on our next meeting and so on and so forth. And through that item is gone. I mean, because there's still people asking questions about the brick building and other things. I think that anything that is on your updates here, I'd like to continue to, if you could, to just move them forward until they're complete. If you understand where I'm coming from.
Any other councilor, anything they have? One of the things I was curious about is the church services building. I know at, last we spoke, we had asked them for some type of a layout that they were looking for. Has that been given to the city?
No.
Okay.
That's all right. Actually, I looked over there today because I'm going to get ahold of them probably this week or start next week because of how it is.
Okay. That's all I have. If there's something else for the good of the city, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing the opposition, we are adjourned.